Twenty-six proposed budget. Tonight, we have presentations from Commissioner Mike Collins, Commissioner of Public Services, as well as Bruce Doig, our Commissioner of Community Services in the Solicitor's Office. And I want to thank Mr. Ailes for being here, Mr. Perry, our Budget Analyst. Who else do we have? Katie Dupont, our Assistant City Clerk, Kim in the booth at BevCam in Bethel, Nixon, our Assistant City Solicitor. And with that, we'll kick it off. Commissioner Collins, welcome. And for those following at home, the budget is available online on the city website. We have it pulled up here. Anything you want to share at the outset, Commissioner Collins?
Thanks for having me here tonight. It's been, this will be my 25th budget. And it seems like we just started the other day, so it's good to still feel fresh in the job. And I couldn't do that, I couldn't feel this way if it wasn't for all of the excellent men and women that work for the Department of Public Services and Engineering Office that make my job possible because I'm just one person standing here while they do all of the work, and I'm privileged to be part of that team. So, having said that, jumping into the budget a little bit as an overview, we continue to refine the structure of our budget to fit more of the mission profile that we have. And last year, we created an administrative division and moved some positions around. With the cooperation of the City Council, we created some new positions and moved some of the funding around into that position. This year, we continue with that theme by the creation of a standalone maintenance division, which doesn't create anything new, other than just reshuffle the structure a little bit within the budget. It's all the same money, so you'll see some line items zeroed out, but they appear, you know, mostly within highway and public property, and those line items are now under a standalone maintenance division, just to try to make it a little bit more easy to follow, easier to follow. Because before, maintenance was buried within the Highway Department budget and a little bit in the public property and a little bit here and there. So, we've tried to segregate that out to make it a little bit more transparent.
Okay. Commissioner Collins, you mentioned new positions. One of them was a security position, I think it was a new position last year. How has that position played out over the last year?
It's one of the highlights of the year. We've been able to, that position, the staff there have been able to do things that have saved the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in outside labor. And honestly, what we, our experience has told us that the, even with hiring consultants and contractors, the quality of work that we would typically get through the normal path that most people are forced to go through, really just wasn't there. And by being able to control that with in-house staff, the new director in that position has been able to just really make us a leader, particularly on the security side. Also, that's played out with, he's virtually single-handedly replaced the phone systems in several of the elementary schools, with the help of contractors, of course, but the job just really couldn't have been done without all of the excellent work that was done through that division. That saved the city an enormous amount of money, and it's all been done, that kind of work is very tedious, very complicated, very detail-oriented. And the fact that that work got done without any disruption to school operations, and the fact that you can go into any classroom, you dial 911, the emergency responders are going to know what classroom in the school you're, they're going to, not just what school. I almost guarantee you, you do that in any other city, you're going to get to the school address, maybe, you're not going to get to the classroom, and that happens in Beverly. And that's thanks to the good work he's done there. So, that's been, that's been a very, very, very beneficial position for the city in a number of ways, not the least of which was, there's no question that we would not be operating out of the combined dispatch if it wasn't for the work that he did. There's a lot of people involved. That was a group effort, an excellent team effort by a number of city staff. But, you know, he really led the way with, that was an incredibly complicated project, so many layers to it. Again, it wasn't a, I don't mean to say it was a one-man show, there was, you know, we involved a number of our trades, the electrician was also deeply involved in that. And then all of the staff on, within the dispatch, the new dispatch department were awesome to work with. It was really a great team effort to pull that together. And it's really, again, those things, those are the kind of things that it's really a challenge to bring an outside consultant in and get what we, the city of Beverly, need. And we got exactly what we needed there. It's pretty awesome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions, comments, colleagues?
Counselor Simeon?
Question for you, Mr. Chairman. Are we just focusing on the administration portion of the budget or the whole umbrella at this point?
I think we could, we could go after any, anything within his purview, please.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins, for being here. I am gonna start with some questions on parking in particular, and I know that falls under the umbrella of the Engineering Department, at least according to how the budget's presented. So, I saw about $360,000 of expenses listed, and so I want to make sure that I didn't miss anything. I saw $116,000 for meter personnel, about $68,000 for the supervisor position, and then another $175,000 for parking and traffic operations. Are there other expenses that go toward operating parking enforcement that are not listed in those three that I missed?
It should all, it should all be within that budget.
Okay. I guess the reason I ask, and this is probably a question for Mr. Ailes, is I saw that on the revenue side, we're transferring in $475,000 of revenue, presumably to bounce, balance off an equivalent number of expenses, and I couldn't make the math work. And that's where I wanted to make sure that I was fully understanding on the expense side, what goes into the downtown parking district in terms of enforcement and maintenance.
Yes, I would just add to Commissioner Collins' comments that, in addition to the operational costs that you see within the budget.
Yep.
There are some, and it's, I just looked to see if I could see the capital expenditure plan, but I believe there's still some debt associated with the, some capital work that we did on certain parking lots. I'll double-check that, so don't hold me to that. Without the capital expenditure plan in front of me, I can't say 100%. It might have fallen off last year or the year before, but there's that piece. And then, in addition to that, we've all got to keep in mind that there was an initial investment in this infrastructure of about $1 million back prior to the pandemic to buy all the kiosks. So, if you look at that as a general fund cost, some of this transfer is designed to recoup effectively some of that and continue to support the ongoing operations of the general fund.
Okay, so that, that's probably the missing link between that $475,000 revenue draw from the fund and the regular operational expenses.
Yes, and you'll also note within the staffing line within that segment that we've brought it down slightly because historical expenditure levels have been a little low. We've had a lot of turnover in that department. But the hope is that as we start to, this past year has been a good example of a kind of fully functioning department, that you might see those staffing costs go up a little bit, probably next year's budget.
Okay. All right, that's one to keep an eye on. Thank you, Mr. Ailes.
You good for now, or is it the same line of questioning?
I have a few other aspects of his budget, but I can hold off and ask those questions after others get the chance.
Okay, we'll move around a little bit, just to get some others involved. That's all right, we'll come back to you. Counselor Rotundo, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Collins, not to look to add salaries, but there is a question, we just, you know, you referred to the savings that was had with adding the person for security, what have you. And I know HVAC is another, we've seen in the schools and all that. Has there been any talk of consideration, or what's the cost that we, I mean, there could be a true savings there, has there been ever consideration of doing the same of hiring an in-house HVAC person?
If you know somebody, please have them apply.
So, it's just, you know, I mean, but there is.
We've been advertising for a long time. That is a capability that we typically have in-house, and we've not been able to fill the position for well over a year. We would save, the trades have gotten incredibly expensive in the last couple of years, like exponentially more money. And we desperately are trying to bring that work in-house. It's just been a challenge to do so. But, you know, we've actually got a number of interviews scheduled. We got some resumes even in the last week, so. The marketplace is, it appears the labor market is turning a little bit since January. Before January, labor was unobtainium. I mean, you just, nobody was applying for anything. Something changed, well, something big changed. And the construction fields have slowed down quite a bit, and a lot of people are starting to knock on the door. Not necessarily a lot of great quality yet, but a lot more people are knocking on our door. So, that's, that's a positive turn. So, hopefully, we can turn that into some positions, because we really need to fill those, because HVAC is one of those things that is really expensive, and it's a constant need for us. You know, you can see in this building, we, that's why we're going to be coming back to the council soon with some additional talk about renovating it, because even this building needs HVAC work. And even the most, you know, the police station needs constant attention. You can't take your eyes off a brand-new building, which is what we always, we always strive to do, to keep them in like-new or better than at delivered condition. You know, we always try to, like, we go into a brand-new building, we say, what can we do to improve what's here? And really, you can't do that cost-effectively without having some in-house capability. So, yeah, you're right on, right on the money.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Ailes, just want to note, you brought up the general fund debt schedule. Would you mind increasing the font a little bit?
I wish I could. Sorry, but what I'll point out, though, is in the FY '26, the very first line up at the top, it says parking lots. So, that's the debt service on parking lots. It's roughly 90, looks like $94,000 in costs there.
Yeah, that's just about the delta between what I.
It's not an exact balance. Like I said before, there's an attempt to kind of recoup some of the initial investment as well.
Okay.
Depending upon the fund balance. In past years, we haven't been able to draw even enough to support the full operations. So, there's an attempt to kind of recoup some of that, that we weren't able to deal with these years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Counselors, Counselor Simeon?
Thank you. I want to jump to sanitation next. So, I know that our contract expires at the end of this coming fiscal year. Where are we in the process of putting, are we putting together an RFP? Is, is there a group internally looking at what the next iteration of the trash contract is going to be?
There will be, because the market's changing quite a bit, especially on the recycling side, so, you know, we've, we will have to put a lot of thought into that. And we'll see where the market is in six months on the recycling side. It's obviously, for years, we got, we made a little money on recycling, or at least it was cost-neutral, and it's now, the tide has turned dramatically towards having recycling be very expensive.
Yeah, and that's why I ask, I know, I just negotiated our contract in Oxford. Recycling's a lot more expensive, most vendors won't even do the regular manual collection, they only do automated collection.
Right. So, yeah, we will definitely, if, the market has changed radically in that regard, especially with the, with Republic coming in and buying and out JRM.
Yeah.
That brought a different business model to trash and recycling in this, in this region. And as you pointed out, if we went out to bid, or if we solicited pricing, we would, we will be told that the current model is going to be more expensive than going to automate it, because they're trying to reduce their manpower costs. So, it's going to be something that we're going to have to decide as the city, what do we want to do? Can we afford that increased cost? And obviously, we're going to have that, there's a, when every, every community that goes through it, there's a little bit of a painful transition to get uniform barrels in place and, and things like that. It's, it's, be a lot easier in Oxford where there's, you know, no parked cars on the road and things like that, but downtown here, it's possible, we're not the, we wouldn't be the first city to undertake automated trash and recycling pickup, but it's going to be a cultural shift for sure. And it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna upend a lot of what we do. So, there'll be a lot of discussion, a lot of public discourse surrounding that. It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a topic we're going to talk a lot about over the next several months.
I appreciate that, and I, you know, look forward to whenever the council plays a part in that discussion. I have other questions if nobody else does. Go to Counselor Spang first.
I just have a follow-up on the sanitation. I understand that we have not increased the fee that we charge for trash pickup, so just looking at the numbers, it looks like the city uses the general fund to help pay for the bulk of the cost for trash and sanitation. And I just, I asked this to Mr. Ailes before, but just curious if there was any thought of stepping up or increasing the amount that we charge so that it doesn't all hit in a new contract year, if there's, I don't know if there's been any thinking around that.
You're gonna, you're gonna make former Counselor Martin throw things at the TV again, aren't you?
Well, and I, you know, on his behalf, I was gonna suggest to Counselor Spang that while we have not increased it, we have also not eliminated it, which would be my preference. So, you know, obviously, we'll talk about that when the time comes.
There's no question, the general fund is subsidizing that enterprise fund right now, too, heavily, and more heavily each year. So, that's part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you. President Flowers, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just while we're on this line of that, I wondered if I also could ask your thoughts, Commissioner Collins. I, too, I think probably all of us have been thinking about this topic, knowing that there'll be a new contract coming. I wonder if you have thoughts, or if there's been conversation about increasing, moving towards a more citywide curbside compost program in the hopes of reducing the tipping fee on the weight of the actual trash that we're disposing of?
We've had discussions with Republic to that end. I think it was a little bit more challenging for JRM, they were more modest operation, they just weren't tooled up for that. Republic has a different fleet. They're probably better able to handle something like that. It would be an added cost. I don't, I don't think it would result in savings, but that shouldn't be the only factor, because of course, if we can manage the compost better, we can manage the greenhouse gases associated with the compost better. And I will just take this moment to note that we have a report from 1978, which isn't that long ago. And even in '78, we were still separating solid waste from garbage, air quotes, garbage, which is what we call compost nowadays. And so, it wasn't that long ago, we used to do something far different than we've been doing for the last 40, 50 years. So, it'd be interesting to, obviously, we don't have piggeries anymore, so that makes that part of it really hard, because the pigs would eat anything but orange peels. So, we'll have, we, you know, there's discussion about anaerobic digestion and things like that, but that's, that's still a very difficult lift right now. And as more communities are generating curbside compost, it's, it's becoming an issue of where to get rid of it, because the facilities are, I know some of the people involved in some of the facilities, and some of them don't want to be doing that. It's, it's very difficult to manage. But, you know, so it's got to be cost-effective for them as well. As a region, we've got to figure out a better answer, because we do generate quite a bit of food waste that could be composted.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and you did anticipate part of my line of thinking, which was that part of the math being, will the cost increase be offset by a reduction in tipping fee cost? And so, I hear you saying possibly not, but that may not be the only consideration. So, I appreciate that. I also appreciate you saying 1978 wasn't that long ago. I was born in 1979, so I feel good now.
Seventy-seven as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Houseman, I start your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to frame my question with sort of a prelude. When I, when I looked through the Public Services section of the budget, sort of writ large, what I saw were a lot of, I'll call them tweaks, decreases in materials, you know, 40% decrease in paving, the electric decreased 40%, certain vehicle fuel and oil. A lot of these sort of smaller costs across the board seemed, training zeroed out, here's another, vehicle fuel and oil down 25%. There's a lot of, purchase of electricity down 28%. There's a lot of the supplies and material line items that have been squeezed, maybe is a better term, squeezed in a downwardly direction. And I'm thinking about the, the first evening when we had these budget cuts, and there was a discussion about structural deficit or not, depending on your point of view, for our next fiscal year. And it occurs to me in looking at this that should your department, departments, face a, in FY '27, a substantial cut in overall funding, it doesn't appear to me that there is really any room in this year's budget to squeeze further in the following year's budget. And I wonder if you could sort of comment on sort of a hypothetical, let's call it $500,000 hit to your budget. What would that look like?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot in that statement, I appreciate the insight. And I'm just really glad that costs haven't increased at all this year. So.
I was struck by the fact that, you know, a projection for electricity down 28% on certain things.
Without looking at that specific line item, I will just throw out the caveat that sometimes the way the budget is presented, it doesn't compare, it compares sometimes the actual or revised budget to the current budget, not what we, not what the City Council appropriated last year to what's being appropriated this year. So, sometimes those, those percentages may be a little bit, not misleading, but it's not the whole story.
Yeah.
Specific line items like training, sometimes we just move that to a different location in the budget, zeroed out in one place, but it shows up someplace else.
I did notice that many things were mentioned as moved to, right? But the ones I'm looking at specifically are not those line items.
And you're right to notice that, you know, to make the budget work for the city overall, we had to squeeze quite a bit. As a city, there aren't many budgets that the mayor and the finance director can turn to and say, we need a little bit of help here. The fire chief, the police chief, the schools, it's all personnel. You know, they have tiny little line items for other stuff, but it's all personnel. And the Public Services budget is like the safety valve, and it's, maybe you could look at that as the canary as well, that, you know, as the overall health of what's happening. And that's the only place often that the mayor and the finance director can turn to and ask me to try to, how can you operate with less for a little while? And we've, this is not our first turn at this. The worst was '04, mostly the cuts were dramatic, but also because the state budget wasn't passed until December, and so we didn't know what the cut was going to be until December. We thought it would be zero, and then it'd be in 10%, and our budget is not linear in spending, so that was a very painful year, and we lost nine positions as a result of that. I hope that we don't see, I hope we don't get put into a position where we have to lay off people, that's the last resort, because we can do a lot with not a ton of money. So, you know, we can keep busy doing good things for the city of Beverly with not a ton of money. So, we're gonna, if we were faced with, if I was told to cut another half million dollars, it would be extremely painful, because we did cut a bunch out of the budget this year. You've noticed the, some of the capital line items, equipment and paving have been zeroed out, and there's a plan for that, there's a plan to address that. But across the board, we had to look and see what else could we cut out. And in some cases, it was just simply getting really, sharpening our pencils and saying, well, exactly how much does this line item need? And, you know, and we're talking these 2,500 or $10,000 line items. We have, as you've noticed, there's a lot of line items in this budget, make up, you know, well over $10 million budget, so. And the fact that we've already been squeezed, the fact that costs continue to rise, we're getting pressure from all sides. You know, I don't look forward to that, but it's, my job has always been to help the city, and this is not part of the job that most people know about, but we've, I've always had to play the role of working with the administration to be the safety valve for when things go sideways somewhere else in the city. And, but still get the job done, you know, still get the snow plowed, the streets paved, and all that stuff. And I try to insulate my staff from that, because they're so good at what they do, they can, they can get the job done. But that doesn't mean that it's easy, or come with, doesn't come with a lot of pressure, but, you know, I, if that's what's asked of us, we'll figure it out. And the last resort would be to lose talent, because we've invested so much time in the staff we have, and they've invested their time in us and their belief in the city. That would be the absolute last resort. We're going to protect that resource before anything else, and we'll have to figure out, if it comes to that, we'll have to figure out what else can we manage to reduce.
Thank you, if I may, just to follow up.
Please.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's been clear that the city side of the budget, and DPS in particular, has functioned as sort of that safety valve in the budget for a long time. And I certainly appreciate sort of the unspoken role that you're referring to in trying to manage, help, help manage budget challenges through your department, but it is very unfortunate that we see that, and I am concerned about what the FY '27 budget may well look like based upon what I see here in terms of DPS being squeezed so much. Thank you.
Mr. Ailes, discussion of a safety valve. How big is our safety valve, and is this the only area? I know the reserve unforeseen that we've talked about in the past, 200-plus K, you know, what are, what are we talking about? What is a safety valve?
Well, when we, let me go up here. You know, when Commissioner Collins and we all talk about a safety valve, we talk about flexibility in the budget, right? And as Commissioner Collins alluded to, his budget historically has a lot of flexibility. In fact, if you look at the start of a fiscal year, what his budget looks like, in many years, it's very different by the end of the year, because you can't possibly predict what some of the, you know, unknowns are that happen throughout the year. And Mike and his team are great about reacting and meeting those needs throughout the year. So, when we talk about safety valves in the budget, there's a couple different areas we look to, one being the reserves, and whether or not we spend to the levels that we're budgeting at the beginning of the year. In not only the reserve for unforeseen, but there are other reserves, right, that in a given year might go underspent from what we originally allocate to that line. Within the DPS budget, there has, we've been fortunate enough in years past to be able to support the requests that have come from that department in a way that give Mike, Commissioner Collins and his team, the flexibility they need throughout the year. For example, this year, I think we're 400 grand over, or 300 grand over in snow and ice. That's going to be able to be absorbed within some underspending in some other areas within the DPS budget. That does not exist as robust in this FY '26 budget. We will be prioritizing as needs arise to try to meet this budget as it's currently projected. Now, that said, we don't know what the winter's going to be like. We've had winters where we have very minimal expenditures in that, in those lines, and those become quote-unquote "safety valves" for other areas that may overspend. So, it's, it's kind of this ebb and flow that happens within the department. I would just say that when you're comparing it to previous fiscal years, there is less of that flexibility and safety valve, to the point that we'll be monitoring budgetary activity on a more regular basis, not only with his department, but through all the departments, just to make sure that we're in a position to be able to react as needs happen with whatever available resources we have in other areas that might go underspent. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that helps. Thank you, Mr. Ailes. Mr. Perry, do you have any thoughts on that? Does that sound about right?
No, I would, I would agree with Mr. Ailes and even Mr. Collins here. As I indicated last week, uh, it's a tighter budget on the municipal side. It's consistent with what they're saying and, uh, let's hope we don't get a lot of snow next year, I guess, you know? But yeah, I, I agree with those comments.
Thank you. Counselor Sweeney.
If I could just add, you know, I've, the one thing that I've always known though, as the year progresses, if we come up against something, the city's always been able to, I've always been, I know I've always had the support of the mayor and the finance director to say, I need more money, can't do it. And I've always been able to find it, you know? And as the fiscal year goes on, obviously things come into focus better, whether that be free cash or, or other, other pressures on the budget. So, um, I know that I'm not just sticking my neck out because if things get really ugly, I have the support that I need to, to do the job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's actually a good segue into my next, uh, line of questioning about the capital outlay line in the highway and maintenance budget. So this was a $350,000 line that got reduced to $150,000 in this proposal. What does that mean operationally for you? I know, so as probably everybody remembers, we discussed this last year and I proposed eliminating this line in its entirety and that wasn't approved. My rationale for eliminating it was, my understanding is that this line pays for vehicle replacements. And I think that that would make more sense unless it's really, you know, for the size of the magnitude of the vehicles that you guys deal with, I think it makes sense to include those on a capital plan, given that most of them are at least $25,000, if not hundreds of thousands of dollar replacements. And that it would make more sense to use free cash, put it on the capital plan, map out over multiple years, a plan to upgrade our vehicle fleet that the council's weighing in on as part of the capital planning process. And that, you know, in and of itself is a larger conversation. But I know ultimately that wasn't approved. And so that led to a situation where last fiscal year, FY25, the $350,000 budget was there to make these upgrades or replace the vehicles as, uh, as necessary. If we're cutting back $200,000 of that and not putting it in the capital plan or looking to another outside funding source, does that mean this is just a year where you think you can get by without making any sizable replacements for vehicles aside from the limited amount of funding? Or are there other larger operational vulnerabilities that would come from having a reduced amount of funding in this line?
You know, to vehicles specifically, this would be a year that unless, unless as, as, uh, Mr. Perry pointed out, if it doesn't snow, we would look to try to maybe reallocate some of that money into buying a truck or two, uh, or a piece of equipment. But this year, we are not planning on being able to do that until we'll see what the health of the city and the budget is towards the end of, of next fiscal year and whether or not we'll be able to move things around within our budget. Or as currently the plan is to tap, to make that a free cash ask later on in, in the year when there's a little bit more clarity.
Okay. And if there's a repair, a few thousand dollar repair to an existing vehicle, not an entire replacement, is that coming out of this line as well?
No.
So this is only new vehicle purchases coming out of the $150,000?
Yeah, this is, this is our capital replacement plan. You know, this is the extent of it because, you know, we have, you know, nearly 200 pieces of, of significant equipment. You know, we have dozens of small pieces of equipment, hundreds of small pieces of equipment. But we have nearly 200 pieces that raised to the threshold of having a license plate on them, for instance. And none of those are cheap now. Even, we just bought an infield machine to groom the baseball infield last year. It was 38 grand. Like, oh my gosh. It's, you know, nothing is cheap now. A small roller for your sidewalk can be almost $60,000. It's, you know, uh, equipment is, is really expensive now. And, um, on the vehicle side, on the truck side, it's, it's gotten really, really expensive. You know, no less than, you know, we would spend the entire budget on one truck now.
And so using, you know, the infield vehicle for an example, how are you planning ahead for those type of replacements? Are they years in advance that you identify, you know, the current equipment is going to fail and you try to map out internally within whatever the appropriation in, in this line is? Or do you, I guess, without kind of rehashing the whole discussion, because there'll be a time and a place for that, unless there is a real like quick turnaround where a vehicle breaks and you need to replace it and that's kind of just how we go along, I would assume you're probably planning out a year or two in advance at least, right? For these vehicle replacements?
We try, um, but, you know, the need far outstrips, you know? If, if we're buying one vehicle a year, but we need four or five, then, you know, we're constantly sliding backwards. What, what we're able to do is we have an outstanding group of mechanics that can keep things going well beyond what is reasonable. That's not the cheapest way to do things always, you know? You know, a lot of people would look at that and say, well, is it cheaper to just replace things more frequently? But we have fantastic mechanics that, you know, as a city, we have always kept vehicles, probably a minimum of five, but up to 10 years longer than any other city around us. And that's not easy to do. That puts a tremendous pressure on, on the mechanics that we have. I'll make a plug for that someday. We really, really do need a new DPW facility because those mechanics are doing yeoman's work in terrible conditions. So, uh, that's, that's how we're managing right now. We have trucks that are 20-plus years old, but, you know, people think they're brand new, you know? Because, um, the mechanics do an awesome job keeping them up and repainting them as necessary, chasing rust. Biggest thing we have, you know, it's the Northeast, so the biggest enemy we have here for our vehicles is rust. And we don't have anywhere, again, another plug for a new DPW facility, we don't have anywhere to store the trucks indoors. So they live outside year round. That is also, um, doesn't, doesn't help the longevity of the vehicles.
And I, I appreciate that. I agree with, one, the need for a new facility, but two, the point you made about the work that your guys do internally, that's certainly appreciated. And a lot of public works departments don't have the same capacity that we have amongst our mechanics. So that's certainly something not to be overlooked.
You can walk into that motor pool on any given day of the week and see an engine completely torn apart. That would never happen in any city around here. That's just, that's just completely radical idea. And they do it as, you know, as routine. You know, you'll see trucks completely blown apart. It's, it's, um, it's impressive what they can do.
No, it certainly is. And I know there's real cost savings for the city there. On, on this line though, just if I may, Mr. Chairman. For Mr. Ailes, so obviously Mr. Perry mentioned the challenges we were facing and essentially his opinion was that if we are to make a, a substantial impact in trying to blunt a potential structural deficit in FY27, we would need to eliminate somewhere close to that $700,000 or so from this budget that we're looking to utilize excess levy capacity for under the current proposal. And so I highly doubt I'll be able to identify 700,000, given how lean of a budget this is. But obviously this line item is one that comes to mind of, could it be eliminated all the way down to zero like I had proposed last year with the understanding that the city would need to commit free cash or other outside funding sources and more clearly identify in the capital plan the need for these vehicle replacements? Because I think all, all of us up here understand the need for the vehicles and that we can't shortchange our fleet. And so with that said, in my mind, it's more of a question of where does the funding come from? And so obviously I'm sure that was something that you considered as part of this process because you did reduce some amount of it from 350 to 150 in this line item. So I'll word the question like this. If I were to propose reducing this line by the full 150 left to zero with the recommendation to use free cash and work into the capital plan, the vehicle upgrades, what would you say as a counterargument for why we should not do that and leave this line item funded as recommended?
Yep. So in this particular year, um, the reason it's at $150,000 in this budget is that actually represents what we think is a reasonable contingency. For the McPherson project, the McPherson Capital Project. And the reason the contingency is in this item, in this line item, is because if it goes underspent, Commissioner Collins can then reallocate it to capital needs within the budget. If it's needed and we spend it, it is spent past the deadline for ARPA funds. So if we kept the contingency in the ARPA funding, we risked losing the funding altogether and giving it back to the feds. So we shifted it out of there and into this line item so that we were able to ensure that we could spend every dollar of ARPA, but still guard against a contingency within the project budget there. It's my hope, it's my thought that we're not going to need it, so it likely will get reallocated to capital. But if we eliminated it, that contingency goes away. And if there is a potential overrun of 100 or so thousand dollars in that project, which isn't uncommon in those types of projects, we would need to come back for a separate allocation from the city council. If, if free cash isn't available at that time, it's going to be a little tricky. If it is available at that time, we could look to free cash to fund it.
That's interesting, Mr. Ailes. What, and I, the decision was made, so I don't want to, you know, belabor a point here, but wouldn't it make more sense to appropriate $150,000 in free cash with the understanding that you could just close out the appropriation if it's not necessary as opposed to tucking it into an unrelated, a seemingly unrelated item in the operating budget?
Yep. So, uh, i- it's related in the sense that it's not uncommon for us to look to Commissioner Collins and his budget to help with shortfalls in a variety of projects across the city. So from our perspective, it was, it was very similar to some of the other contingencies that are contained within his budget on an annual basis. The, the rationale behind leaving it in the budget this year is so that if it does go unspent, the capacity is there from Commissioner Collins to buy a truck or buy a piece of equipment, uh, that he deems necessary.
Okay, Mr., thank you, Mr. Ailes. I understand the rationale. And I also understand that there is the theoretical world that, you know, councils are kind of operating in when we're putting the budget together and then the real world of what unfolds between July 1st and June 30th of the next fiscal year. So I don't, I don't want to mitigate the reality there that things change once a budget's passed. However, I do have concerns with what you're saying, less so for the content and more so for the fact that it, it doesn't really seem to be too transparent. And that's generally what I'm getting at in whether it's this specific line proposing to potentially eliminate it, to use free cash instead, so that the vehicle purchases would be done in a more transparent manner in terms of funding through the capital plan, the capital plan that clearly identifies the vehicle purchases. And then, you know, thinking of something like the McPherson contingency, that could have been a discussion amongst the council. I still think it would have made more sense probably to utilize free cash to set that money aside. And then I don't think any one of us here would doubt the value of doing that because we all want to see that McPherson project completed. So that's, I think, I understand the need to have flexibility within the budget for when things arise that were unforeseen throughout the course of the fiscal year. But that's where I would think we'd be better off building in that flexibility into reserves that are clearly outlined as those type of contingency funds as opposed to just tucking away funding in Commissioner Collins' budget. That's just my two cents. I'm not necessarily framing that as a question, uh, so I, I can leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else want to weigh in on this topic? Counselor Houseman? Okay, you're deferring.
I'm not sure that's true, but they, they. Mine is brief, I think.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Ailes, I think this actually is a question for you. It's somewhat of a follow-up. In listening to this conversation, I guess a question that I have, I would be interested in hearing your thoughts on, um, I can understand as well the desire to have money ready should there be an overrunning cost in the McPherson project. Can you explain the thinking in terms of not putting that in the line item like reserve for unforeseen, for example? I do understand what you're saying about then if it goes unspent, it would allow Commissioner Collins to be able to purchase vehicles. I wonder, I, I'm curious about your thinking about not having it in reserve for unforeseen if it were to go unspent, then asking for a reallocation to place it in the vehicle purchase line.
Sure. We certainly, that, that, that could be an option, right? It's really about ease of use at that point. I do want to clarify because I don't want this to be misunderstood. The ARPA funds was, along with the million dollar earmark that we got from the federal government, covered the entire McPherson project. It was all contained within that budget. As we got close to the ARPA deadline, which was December 30th, 2024, all funds had to be obligated in a contract. The contingency of the project budget isn't obligated yet. So you're not able to enter into a contract with it because it's unforeseen, it's a contingency. So we couldn't go to the federal government and say, we've used all our ARPA money. So what we did as a strategy was we took the value of that contingency at the time and we paid for some roadwork, specifically the Corning Street Intersection Design Work that had been budgeted elsewhere. And we paid for it out of ARPA funds so that we fully utilized the ARPA funds. But then we had that shortfall of $150,000 that needed to be programmed in a recurring source like general fund source so that if it went unspent, which we expect that portions of it will, it doesn't get lost. It's, it's fully utilized for the taxpayer. So that's why the strategy was where it was. To your question about where we house that money, sure, we could very easily have put it in a reserve for unforeseen, come back to the council, asked for a reallocation, had a public, you know, um, that would have required a public hearing. However, the value of $150,000 on a $7 million project, um, it felt a more appropriate place to leave it within the public safety budget where we could easily reallocate it in a timely manner should the, the need arise. A lot of times when these change orders come up in a project, we're not going to stop work for a month while we have a public hearing, see that the, you know, sometimes we need to act quickly with these funds. So it's, it's a question of being able to operate and react quickly is part of the strategy there as well.
Thank you.
I, I do understand that the question about transparency. I think that's why this is important that we're having this discussion so you all understand what's represented by that number. So, hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Good.
I do also feel.
Oh, go ahead.
I do also just want to recognize that, you know, overall, the public services budget is down nearly half a million dollars. When you, when you take into account salary increases, so we're down real dollars, but buried within there is salary increases. So this is to me, one hopeful little glimmer of light that maybe we don't need this contingency. And that's something I can use within my budget to try to fix some of those things that we had to cut to, to make the overall budget balance. So it's, I appreciate the strategy because it gives me some flexibility, some hope that there's some flexibility as the year comes on. It's been a good project so far. We hope that it'll come in right on budget and no, no surprises. We're out of the ground now, so the surprises hopefully stop. That's always the scary thing is getting the foundation in. And you, you can see if you drive down there, the building looks kind of like a building right now, so.
Go ahead, Counselor Houseman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for Mr. Ailes and then a follow-up with Mr. Perry. Very interesting discussion and I appreciate the strategy, so I'm harkening back to the question, the conversation we just had. I appreciate the sort of the real world strategy of providing, uh, flexibility and sort of the, the creative resourcefulness of, of how to deal with the ARPA money and, and putting it where it might be in a, in a place that it's readily available without potentially the delays that would come from a, a necessary, uh, public hearing. At the, but at the same time, the, let me ask you this way. Are there any other similar creative, resourceful, um, devices in this budget that would be sort of an apples-to-apples kind of strategy that was used that this council wouldn't otherwise see but for a perceptive question by a counselor? Because the transparency issue, frankly, with all respect, is kind of there. So that, that's my question. Are there any other tucked-in little resourceful, um, strategies in the budget that we should be aware of?
There are, and you'll see this in a number of areas, where there are vacancies of staffing throughout the budget. And this is a perfect example, within the DPS, there are specific vacancies that exist right now that we are making assumptions around. We think by the time the posting gets out, we do the, the, the. We think by the time the posting gets out, we do the the interviews, someone gives their notice, that we're only going to hire someone for nine months. So we budget nine months. Well, if Commissioner Collins is unable to fill the position, has to repost it a couple of times, and we only end up funding that position for, say, eight months or seven months, it's a similar situation where he's able to use that turnover savings to reallocate to other areas of his budget. So it's somewhat of a similar strategy. It's not to the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar tune. It's to a few thousand here, a few thousand there. But other than that, I can't really think of anything that.
You understand that.
I understand the question, yeah.
Vehicle, whatever the line item is called, but something for for vehicle purchases.
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay.
Capital outlay.
Yeah.
It's a capital project, capital outlay. I know it's not totally transparent, but it felt appropriate.
So my follow up, Mr. Perry, please. So, Mr. Perry, you've heard the conversation. Are we making a mountain out of a molehill? Or or, I mean, I I appreciate the, as I have in the past, the resourcefulness of Mr. Ailes to, if you will, work budgetary magic, to cleverly create flexibility in the budget and and be responsible that way. But speak, speak to the to the conversation, if you would.
Sure.
Both on the transparency side as as well as the sort of real world necessity side.
I was attempting to get up there when Councillor Sweeney was talking. I couldn't get up here. But first off, I asked those very same questions that you all just asked about a week and a half ago with Mr. Ailes. I, as your budget analyst, is fully aware of this. And it's hard for me to talk about every single, there's about 2,000 line items there in in my summary. But I was aware of it as your budget analyst. I think it's a wise decision. I'm not opposed to it, obviously, you know, if, you know, and the fact that it was caught, I give Councillor Sweeney credit on that. Not caught, but he recognized it. He's a budget guy himself, so he kind of looks at that stuff. But I do want to address for a few minutes, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the issue of the utilization of free cash. Now, keep this in mind, we we certified last year around November, December, ten point seven million dollars. The mayor had got up here in his opening presentation, and he's estimating around nine million dollars for the next certification around November, December. So that's reducing by one point seven million dollars, okay? In my view, as I indicated a week ago, because of the way we're, in my view anyways, we're a bit less conservative on local receipts. I don't know how much more it's going to drop the subsequent year, but my crystal ball tells me it could drop more, which means we're going to put more and more pressure on free cash going forward, given the circumstances. I add to that discussion the fact that we've now shifted our roads and sidewalk expenditures from the operating side to the reserve side, specifically free cash. That free cash is getting more stressed, in my view anyways, especially over the next couple of years. So I guess my view would be that even though we'd like, you, Councillor Sweeney's a hundred percent correct, you can do that, there's no question, that's not in dispute whatsoever. But I'm worried about the future of free cash. As I indicated to you last week, in my view, it's going to be a lot more difficult to do capital projects given the way the operating budget is absorbing more of the revenues in relationship to our reserves. And while, yes, we can do those things, I want to remind you that you should be cognizant that free cash could be a bit more challenging in the next several years. Hope that helps.
You brought up roads and sidewalks, good segue. I did want to note that the budget does not contain roads and sidewalks in the operating budget, correct? It's now a.
This year, that's correct.
The point you just made, isn't that part of the concern that that we should have about about roads and sidewalks? If it's something that's a priority, should that not be included in the operating budget? You know, who's to say what we can afford in a couple of years?
No, that's a great question, Mr. Chairman. And I actually agree with that somewhat. I would rather see in the operating budget. But in order to do that, you're going to have to cut three million dollars someplace. And the question would be, where would you, where can we find three million dollars?
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
You're welcome.
Other questions, Councillor Spang.
I want to shift to a different type of capital project and talk about the water and sewer enterprise funds. I saw it looks like we're transferring some of the retained earnings for each, a little under half a million of water and over half a million for sewer. And it looks like we're not funding the lines at the levels that the capital expenditure plan would anticipate funding in order to replace one percent of the lines each year so that you're on the hundred year schedule. I know a lot of that's probably happening because it's a tight budget season, but I just want to make sure that we're in an okay position to make replacements and repairs when we need to. And just wanted to ask your thoughts on that. Sorry, it's kind of jumbled.
If you, you keep in mind, I'm the one that spends money. No, I'm not the one that appropriates it. So I would spend whatever you gave me. But that obviously comes at a price, and and that would be greatly increased sewer and water rates. The sewer and water rates, you know, we're going to be replacing the water meters this year and next a little bit. That's going to be the the next long term debt that we're going to take on for that. We do have to have a discussion as a city going forward with necessary upgrades, both at SESD and Salem Beverly. Those will have rate impacts on us here. We can't ignore our local water distribution system at the same time. Again, that's a place where the staff of the of the water department, assisted by some of the other departments as well, have done incredible work. The work that was done on Bridge Street last year by the in-house staff was done with a very small crew at enormous savings to the city, millions of dollars compared to a contractor doing that work. And again, when we do it, it's done right. Not to say our contractors don't do it right, but a lot of times we have to teach them how to do it right. It's not, what we do is difficult. It's not going into an unplowed field and putting water main through. What this water shop does and what the rest of the DPW does is difficult compared to what contractors are typically faced with. So, yeah, it's a, I would love there to be more money available to us. What you see largely in there affords us to be able to buy materials, and that's the key thing. If we can keep buying materials, if we can fill all the positions, which we're getting a lot closer than we've been in a long time to filling those positions. And just as important, keeping the the highly skilled people that we have and not losing them is a really critical part of our program. So we could spend a lot more money, there's no question. If if the easiest thing for me to do would be to hire a bunch of engineering firms, design a bunch of stuff, put it out to bid, I'd love to do that. We don't have that luxury, you know? We have to keep the city alive and and fully functional at a very high level of service with the budget that we're, that's presented. So, so yes, if you can come up with a better way to get us money, I'd appreciate that, but it really, it's it's what can the rates sustain? The rates are going up this year, they're going to go up each year. And we're trying to not, as a city, try not to overwhelm taxpayers slash the rate payers because it all comes out of the same pocket at the end of the day.
Councillor Rotundo, did you have a question on on water sewer? Or something else?
I just had one comment on the water sewer. I'm getting a lot, I'm getting some calls about, you know, from residents about being overcharged or having issues with their meter. And and you noted the the water changeout project. What what is the status of that? And is that designed to fix this issue?
The water meter changeout project is is well underway. We've, we have a contractor, we have the meters. A lot of the meters are in Beverly. We're going to be kicking off in the next month or so with actual installations. We are, one of the first things we're doing is putting in, putting in our network so that we can read the meters because currently we drive around with a van with the world's oldest computer in it. And we read meters by radio, and we'll continue to read meters by radio. But it'll be a fixed network of receivers that'll, that'll pick up the reading. So we don't have to drive around with a van anymore. I don't believe anyone's being overcharged. Meters generally fail slow. The meters themselves are still working, they're still working very well. The reading system, the thing that transmits the reading to our, to our van, the batteries in those are, you know, they're well beyond their service life. That's what we're having the discrepancies. So we'll have to, we send out postcards to the residents. And if anyone calls, say, just go down and read your meter, and we can true up the bill.
So they should reach out and they'll come out and inspect it?
Yeah. And we are reaching out to the customers whose whose meters are stopping communicating. There's not, the majority of them are still communicating, but there are, you know, a few hundred that are not communicating.
Are we targeting those as part of the replacement project, or are they?
We will, we will, if those people want to be first, we will absolutely, you know, we're going to, anyone who wants to step up be be on the early end of the program. There's a whole, there's a whole system we have in place that will roll out and will.
I may have a few candidates for you.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Anyone who is currently having issues, if they wish, they could be at the head of the line.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Rotundo.
Thank you. Commissioner, you had made comments just a few minutes ago in regards to finally being able to fill positions, which is great. Our DPS is phenomenal. I mean, I don't care what anyone says, and I've witnessed it. And we're fortunate because we do save a ton of money, as you stated. But I also know that hearing from many of the guys that I have the pleasure to come across, the assessments going on for the DPS out, and I don't know if you have the answer, but the similar conversation coming up is, where is that at currently? And I know it's partly, partially, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Ailes, in our budget with anticipation of whatever the assessment value. Do you have any idea where it is right now?
I'm so surprised they asked you about that. Obviously, it's something that I actually pushed for in the beginning because I wanted that for them because we all recognize how important they are to the city. It's, these assessments have to be done right. And the mayor had committed to the DPW staff that no matter how long it takes, the clock starts last July 1st. So it really doesn't matter, in a sense, when it's finished because the starting point for for whatever changes are made is is fixed. And everyone will be made whole to back to July, last July 1st. We are close. We are closer than we've been in a long time. It's been, it's been a slow process. Our consultant had some personal issues that delayed it several months. But I believe that we're close now. I don't, I'm going to, definitely not going to say any dates because I know those dates will be hung over my head. But we're close. And and, you know, the goal, the goal is to take care of the people that do the good work here.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions for Commissioner Collins? Councillor Sweeney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this might actually overlap with Mr. Doig's world as well. I'm not sure who oversees this. In the golf and tennis enterprise fund, there is an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars in the budget to bring it from fifty thousand to one hundred fifty thousand in the lines titled clubhouse improvements. Is that a larger renovation to the clubhouse? Or is it just reflective of increased costs of maintaining the facility?
As you probably know, there's been a, a plan, a master plan, and actually, construction documents created for the renovations of the clubhouse because that clubhouse needs everything.
And I would think a hundred thousand dollars, though, that's probably not significant enough to really make a difference in the.
It's not where, it's not where we would like to be. We would like to be doing that renovation project. It's just not something the city can afford to undertake right now. So in lieu of that, in order to keep the place functional, electrical, plumbing, HVAC, ADA, all those things are are increasing demands on the building. So it's an old building, and it needs a lot of work.
Okay, so this, this, in the absence of the overhaul, which I agree is certainly necessary in that building, this is just reflecting the increased cost of maintenance. And this line will either stay at one hundred fifty or increase in future years until ultimately some decision is made about replacing the building or renovating the building.
Anything else? So, yeah, you could, you can note that it's a significant adjustment from the previous fiscal year. We typically spend about fifty thousand dollars a year for this line item. This is a fixed amount of income that comes into this enterprise fund every year, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars plus some reimbursements for some electrical costs. That then gets programmed into the expenditure side. Whatever gets underspent in this line, and I don't anticipate them spending the full amount on building maintenance, we would likely either let it fall to the fund balance to be available for a future allocation to the larger project or in the fiscal year, have a transfer process which would transfer it to a capital stabilization fund to begin squirreling away some, some of this money. Now, keep in mind, this isn't taxpayer money. This is revenue that's derived from the management firm that manages the golf facilities. So it's a fixed payment that they pay the city every year. That's, that's the strategy around that line. But we, we don't anticipate spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on building maintenance this year. Okay, thank you, Mr. Ailes. That's it, Mike.
Councillor Houseman?
Yes, likewise, this may overlap between Mr. Doig and 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 Mr. Collins. Can you bring us up to speed on where in this budget and and how the budget would be deployed to do some of the work on the carriage house at Lynch Park? The side that faces Ober Street has cracked windows that are open to the weather, fascia board that is not complete and opens that side to the weather. That side, the last time I was down there, has not been painted in a long time. My concern is about stabilization of the carriage house, particularly that side seems to be most challenged and has been continuing for a while. And I know that the, there's a master plan sort of under work through the sustainability office. But talk to me about what we can expect during this season, if at all, to sort of address those concerns there.
Yeah, I mean, the carriage house would compete for dollars within the maintenance budget here to, and all we can ask for in that, in that building is to stabilize certain things. We don't have the money on hand to do any large scale renovation. Really, that that north wall there facing Dick and June's pretty much needs to be completely removed and rebuilt, reframed in its entirety. There's been water, fire, all kinds of damage internal to that. But there's a steel structure behind it. So the steel structure is what keeps the building looking plumbing and square. And so we're going to have to, over the course of this year, we anticipate trying to make some of those small adjustments to the facade, plug up some of the holes in the, in the fascia and the soffit on the water side. So there's a couple of places on that corner, on that, on that front corner there that where there's that fancy trim detail on the corner that you probably noticed, there's really nothing to attach to. So we're going to have to, I know that sounds kind of crazy. You'd have to see the way the building is built because there is steel structure holding it all up. But the wood has rotted away behind it. So we're going to have to install some blocking to basically make some temporary repairs there until we can get in there and do something more substantial. And we are looking hard at how do we, how do we harden that building in a way that will allow it to stay at that location for, for the long term, really?
Is, is the challenge primarily financial or in terms of personnel having, being available to actually?
It's a little of both because in order to be affordable, we would have to do it in-house, right? Because if we hired a contractor to do that, it's going to be incredibly expensive. And there's not, now wouldn't be the great time to do it. If if we were to try to tackle something like that, we probably wouldn't tackle it till till the fall because it would be very disruptive to.
Right, sure.
Life in Lynch Park over the summer when everybody wants to enjoy it. So our goal would be to just, again, continue to stabilize it. We, you know, that, years ago, that that was the effort we put into putting a new roof on it so we're not sustaining any additional damage. And that roof included some of those repairs. We got some more of those repairs when, when the building was accidentally set on fire. We, some of those, some of those repairs were able to be incorporated in, in the insurance claim. And we have a couple of glaring things that we know we got to take care of over there, so.
If you had the money and this fall came around, what, without trying to pin you to something firm, what kind of timeframe, if you were to do it in-house, you had the money?
It's at least three months. It's at least three months. It's at least three months worth of work. It's a lot of work. Just a, because we, like, literally, that entire end of the building has to be pulled off and reframed.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Spain?
Yes, my question is going back to the golf and tennis. You had mentioned, Mr. Ailes, that it's the $380,000 that they received from the management company, and then the line for the other $30,000, I didn't, I couldn't figure out what that meant. It's on page 156.
So that is an estimated reimbursement from the management company for solar credits that they receive on their energy bills. So they, when they receive the credits, pay the city back for, because we've bought the energy credits.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else from Commissioner Collins?
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, we'll go with our Director of Parks and Recreation and Community Services, Bruce Doig. Welcome, Bruce. How are you?
Doing great. I love following Mike because he always has the microphone nice and high. And I always, Mike, don't leave yet. I always have to start off by thanking Mike and his guys. As Mike said, they have tremendous people. They pour their hearts into what they do, and whether it's taking care of fields or taking care of the parks. You go around after a tough winter, and you look at Lynch Park, Ober Park, you know, any of the waterfront parks or any of our parks, and they look amazing. So I can never go without thanking Mike and his staff for all they do. Certainly, it was tough when we lost Phil Klemmich to retirement and Mike Bouchard, but the folks that are stepping up into their roles are doing a great job already as well, helping out on a lot of projects. So again, Michael, thank you very much, and your guys do a great job, so thank you. So I'll talk a little bit about community services. Again, I think, you know, within the five departments that I have, we have some amazing directors. I'll just go through the list. I'm sure you know them all, but at the library, Allison Babin. She's been working very hard. You know, they have about 712 programs running right now for people of all ages. They had 161,000 visits last year, and that was about sixty, excuse me, 8,900 different people. And then they have great resources for everybody. They've got the Library of Things, they've got all kinds of programs going on. So again, they just do a great job over there, and Allison does a great job leading that staff. Health Department, Laura Delkai, who's here tonight. Again, she's only been with us for two years now, and has done an amazing job taking over from Bill Burke and, you know, just really getting that department heading in the right direction as well. Again, they have, you know, lots and lots of inspections. You'll see in the budget and Laura's email, or mail letter to you that, you know, they're looking to maintain the three sanitarians because the number of inspections they have to do from restaurants to rental units and everything else, it's just, the number is amazing, and the fact that they can keep up with that. And these are all mandated, by the way, so again, the fact that they keep up with that is great, and again, points to Laura's leadership within that group as well. Counsel on Aging, Chris Gomez-Farwell, again, has been with us for just over two years. And they've done some amazing things over there. The, they have new programs for seniors. Again, they're coming up with new programs all the time. They, their outreach department is assisting people with everything from housing, SNAP, fuel assistance, and other, many other areas. Right now, they're the only group in the city that's helping seniors with housing. A lot of the other groups within the city are referring people to the senior center. So they do an amazing job helping people find housing when they need it and other assistance when they need it. And they've been increasing diversity at the senior center. When Chris was first hiring, we talked a lot about, you know, having buses, you know, going to downtown and bringing people to the senior center, people that had never been there before. Chris has been reaching out to some of the other, some of the housing facilities and, you know, talking with people and getting them to go there. So it's just becoming, it's always been a vibrant location, but now it's a very diverse, vibrant location and increasing more and more every day. So again, and then in the veteran's side, Veteran Service Officer David Perrin-Chief. David's been with us for about 10 years now, a little over 10 years. But again, does a great job working with all the veterans, providing assistance when needed. He has created the Warrior Weekend, which if you haven't been, it's an amazing weekend of activities at the high school with, you know, tanks and helicopters and all kinds of things, and just a lot of benefits to the senior, to the veterans themselves with information and everything else. And his work with Memorial Day and Veterans Day ceremonies has been great as well. So I can't say enough about these four directors within those community service departments. Again, I think they're really the future of the city and the future of, of my community service area. But again, I thank them all very much for the hard work that they do day in and day out to help the people within, within all the citizens of Beverly from, you know, young ages through old ages. So within the rec department, we're, right now, we've got nine projects going on, hoping to finish a few of them in the next few weeks to a couple of months. If you've driven through Gloucester Crossing lately, you'll see some significant changes at Holcroft Park, where we have a brand-new basketball court, brand-new pavilion, brand-new playground. All, excuse me, the playground equipment, we have to put in some more mulch now that they've poured the, poured in place rubber. But that'll all be done by Friday, and that will be completed as well. And then it's just a few little things that we have to finish off to complete the project. And so that's a project that we're very proud of. Simon Street has taken a while. We had some challenges with the prep of the area, the subsurface and different things going on. But that is, the playground equipment is being installed as we speak and should be done by next week. And so that will be completed, and then we'll just have to put in some fencing and some landscaping, and that'll be done as well. Gillis Park is ongoing. We've done some work there, a small amount of work last year. But we just had a meeting prior to this to talk about the next steps. We're, by the fall, we hope to put in a brand-new pavilion through a CPC grant. And then also, we have a $200,000 earmark where they hope to redo the entryway to the park where the World War I monument is and make the entrance much more inviting, much more accessible, and a much, a really nice passive recreation area. So, and then future renovations will happen depending on funding going forward and other priorities within War II. But, you know, we're looking at the entire city to figure out priorities. I'll get back to that in a minute. One project that I'm extremely proud of is the AED project, where AED is being put in all of the parks in the city. We've identified 37 parks, including the Beverly Golf and Tennis Club, and they will, they have three units right now. And so that brings a total of 39 AEDs that we have, will be purchasing. We've already purchased 31 and installed most of those. We'll be installing 10 more shortly when DPS has the opportunity to get out and do that with everything else that's going on. But again, and right now, we've invested over $50,000 in city money between Lynch Trustees grants, money out of my budget for Park of the Year and other areas, and then just some other, there have been some private donations. $50,000, excuse me, $20,000 from other areas as well, so. So I'm very proud of that. It serves a need within the city. We've had some fatalities, even at the Beverly Golf and Tennis Club over the years where having an AED on site might have helped. So, so again, that's going very well. To date, I've done 29 projects with the CPC, including the three that just got approved, which, thank you very much for approving the budget. Replacing the playground equipment at Ballage Playground, putting in a splash pad at Holcroft, which will be the next phase of the Holcroft Improvements. And the pavilion at Gillis Park will also be funded through this year's CPC round. So a lot going on, and again, just, we're always looking for funding opportunities for projects. Somebody mentioned, you know, if we had enough money for the carriage house, it would be great. But I say, if we had all the money in the world, we could solve all the world's problems. But, you know, that's always the limiting factor, is how much can we do with what we have? But we keep looking for, for different grants, and the CPC has been extremely generous over the years in giving us the funds we need to do a lot of these projects, so I greatly appreciate that. The other project that we have completed or almost completed recently is the signage project. A lot of people have told me they, they love the new signs in the parks. They look great. And so all of the wayfinding signs have been installed. The only thing left is the regulatory signs. And again, we purchased all of the regulatory signs. They've been delivered along with all the posts. It's just a matter of, again, finding the resources in Mike's area to get them installed at the parks. So hopefully, that'll be done soon as well. But that will include all new regulatory signs at every park. They'll be consistent in look and feel. And so there won't be any, you know, questions about, well, what's the rules here versus in another park? So I think that's all that I have for kind of a summary, but I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Doig, and I just wanted to start by thanking you and your team. I think all of your departments really have a positive impact on our residents, so I just want to thank you for the work you're doing. We're very happy to have the Beverly Farms Library Branch back open. I was there today, so thank you for that. And the summer rec program's starting soon, so look forward to that as well. Open that up to questions or comments for Mr. Doig. Councilor Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I definitely want to echo the thanks for the work that you and your department heads do. And in particular, I am appreciative of the signage project at the parks. I think that came out great. I've heard from a lot of residents that think it's a really nice touch to our parks, so hats off to you on that work.
Well, there were a lot of people involved in that as well, you know, going back to Kevin Hartuny, and this has been a six-year project, so we wanted to make sure we got it right, so we took our time, but it's, came out very well, so thank you.
But that leads into my question, speaking of parks and Park of the Year. So I know that in the past, when we've discussed this budget line, it's essentially been used as, and you just referenced it in your comments, a stream of funding to help supplement some other ongoing projects, whether it's ADA accessibility upgrades or just general maintenance at some of the parks. And I know that this line in the mayor's proposal has been zeroed out from $50,000 to zero. Could you talk about what that means for your department operationally?
Well, with all the projects we have going on now, you know, we have funding sources for those. But as we discussed when we were looking at the budget and finalizing the numbers, you know, if something breaks somewhere, if there's a problem with a piece of equipment or something else within a park, we're gonna have to, there's gonna be a challenge to find that funding, whether it comes from the enterprise fund, if that's possible, or other funding sources, but that's the risk that we're taking. You know, with saying that we don't, won't have that $50,000, but if something necessary comes up, we would have to find the funding somewhere to do it. Now, I know that we've already had people come to us about the playground equipment at Ober Park, having some rust areas and needs. The playground equipment at Cahill Park in Centerville, same thing. And even the equipment at Dix Park, there's been some, people have told us about some things that are rusting out. Now, those were all done around the same time, early 2000, you know, between 2000, maybe 2003. And that's kind of the lifespan of the equipment. That's the risk, again, we take, is trying to identify what needs to be done next, which is why we're doing Ballage next, because there were some major rust areas there. It was identified last summer, and we went ahead with the funding source for that. But again, anything can go wrong at any time. You know, we're looking at a Hearn Park, we're looking at Bar, Barter Gardens. You know, I've mentioned before to the council that of all the basketball courts we have in the city, you know, there's probably six that really need to be replaced. We replaced a couple with Holcroft and so forth. But we replaced the three tennis courts last year. But, you know, you're looking at a half a million dollars to a million dollars just to fix all those. And they are safety hazards because the cracks are not just minimal. They're fairly deep and wide, and, you know, hopefully, we don't have to shut them down because somebody could get hurt. So, so we're scrambling to find what we can, you know, get the grants where we can and when we can, and hopefully, we'll be able to continue doing that, but it's gonna take time, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doig. And on the piece about the Recreation Enterprise Fund, so it looks, and correct me if I'm wrong, I see the reduction in the assistant department head salary line. I'm assuming you're shifting some of that onto the Recreation Enterprise Fund, right?
Right, we're taking half out of the enterprise fund this year.
Yeah, which makes sense. I, I know Mr. Peddell does a lot of work with the programs that generate revenue under that fund, and he certainly does a great job with them. But with that, and talking about how we fund improvements to our parks outside of grants, tapping that enterprise fund, part of this line of questioning may be for Mr. Ailes, but have we thought of trying to utilize more of that fund for operational expenses that reasonably fit under that umbrella to try to get them off of the general fund? And then that maybe kind of goes to the question for Mr. Ailes. What is the health of the balance of that fund? Are, are we in a position to even consider something like that? Or would it require us to look at raising fees that go into the fund and set off a whole nother conversation really about how that fund is utilized? And just, I ask because I know that it's a tight budget, and that seems like maybe an avenue that could be utilized to help offset some of your operating expenses.
Right, I think last year, November's timeframe, when it was certified, we had about $384,000 in there. Obviously, we're using some of it for, to offset the costs in the general budget with that, with half of John's salary and so forth. But there's still a significant amount there that we could tap into if we had to. I don't like to, you know, just randomly spend it, but if there's a need, an emergency cost that we need to incur, then we could certainly look at that.
And, and so, so that I understand, that mentality basically would apply to, it's a tight budget. The one-off expenses that otherwise are paid for from Park of the Year can reasonably be transferred to this fund if need be, but that you don't think we could responsibly increase the dedicated commitment, whether it's salaries or other recurring operating expenses, onto the fund at this time? And that's why you kind of landed with, or where you did on how the use of the fund is, works with your budget proposal here?
Yeah, well, the way it's set up now is all of the part-time staff that work at Lynch Park, collecting money, running the camps where we bring in revenue with so forth, are paid for out of the enterprise fund. The ones like park instructors, councils in training, you know, directors and things.
Yeah.
They don't generate any revenue, so we, we take it out of the general budget. Now, some of that could shift, you know, again, depending on needs. Again, we have in the past tapped into the enterprise fund. We did back in 2018 for about $175,000 to supplement playground improvements all over the city. But those were, you know, pretty much Band-Aid maintenance, and again, a lot of these playgrounds are getting to the point where they have to be totally replaced versus replacing a part here and a part there. But it could be done if we need to do it with appropriation from you folks from the enterprise fund to a fund where we can do playground improvements, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doig. And if I may, I would appreciate Mr. Perry's perspective on this.
Sure, Mr. Perry, could you comment?
Sure. I'm not as tall as Mr. Doig. I, I just pulled out the balance sheet there. We certified last, December 11th in the Parks and Recreation Fund balance of $346,611. So that was the dollar amount we certif, that was certified by the Department of Revenue. We, I have, we've discussed some of this in the past. A former counselor pushed pretty hard there about six, seven years ago on this. We did transfer some funds from the enterprise fund retained earnings to do some capital projects on swings and slides and things of that nature. I'm an advocate for that. You, you don't want to draw the fund balance down to zero. You gotta be, you know, strategic about it. But I, in my view, using some of the retained earnings for capital projects, in my view, is a wise decision. The city has done that, and certainly, it's something we could explore going forward as well.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, but you wouldn't recommend increasing the operating expenses that are committed to the fund as opposed to the general fund in any different manner than what the mayor's proposal lays out currently?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Present flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, Mr. Doig, for your presentation and I'll echo the thanks that others have already offered for your department and departments that fall sort of under community services broadly. Particularly, I just wanted to mention a word, I, I know you highlighted some programs that you were feeling excited about or work that's ahead. I wanted to offer a word of thanks to you specifically, but then to your team for the work that you did working with me and working with the local family to get some playground communication boards installed at five of our city parks. Also at our schools, and I know that was slightly separate, but you did play a role in that. And just for folks who may not know, these communication boards are used often sort of most specifically for children who are nonverbal or artistic. They mirror the images that might be used on their iPad when they're communicating. But in our work together and, and working with the family, we did learn that also they're really useful for all kinds of communication practice, including for children who may not speak English as their first language. So I wanted to thank you for that. I'm not sure everybody's aware that that's been installed, but thank you for your attention to it.
You're very welcome. Again, it's one of our goals is to have a communication board in every playground in the city. I just purchased two for Holcroft Park, so- board in every playground in the city. I just purchased two for Holcroft Park. So they'll go up with the rest of the signage that we're going to be putting up, along with the water fountains that we've talked about in the past. I'd like to have a bottle filling station in every park as well. When the one goes in at Holcroft and the one goes in at Gillis, we'll have at least three now, Lynch Park and those two parks. But again, it's a goal, but it's an expensive goal. So thank you.
Thank you. And then, if I may, I have one question.
Please.
I'm wondering if either you, Mr. Doig, or Mr. Ailes, or I know Ms. Delica is here, although not really scheduled on the agenda, but I think I'm just missing it. So if someone could just point me to where the Social Services Navigator position would be. I feel like the mayor mentioned that we would be hiring for that position again.
Yeah, that's within the opioid fund, which is a separate fund altogether.
Thank you. I just needed that reminder. So thank you for that. I'm eager to see us be able to continue to sustain that. I think such a needed position. So thank you for reminding me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam President. Other questions? Counselor Crowley?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, not so much questions. I just want to do a shout out as far as Bruce and his team and what's happened over the last year as far as specifically in Ward Three. We've done a complete reshuffle of the parks and stuff there. Simon Street, the two pocket parks, they'll be just about finished up. Some great things. Same thing with Holcroft. If you haven't been down there recently compared to a few months ago, it's a whole new world, as they call it. The families are liking it and everything else. And the collaboration's been great with your groups, the contractors, with the families and everything down there. So just shout out, appreciate it. And then we've moved on to Balch Park too, as far as we're getting a lot of use and some collaboration to help out with, because Cummings uses that park a little bit too. So there's been some collaboration there and some things. So I appreciate it. And thank you for all the hard work.
Well, yeah, it's been a team effort. Again, our department has certainly been involved. But with DPS, doing a lot of the legwork for us, especially to finish up and then working with the neighbors. And we did it at Simon Street. We had several meetings with the neighbors there to get ideas on designs and colors and everything else. And we did it at Holcroft. And we're planning on doing it in Ward Two as well. So again, it's always a team effort, you know. You know, my staff works incredibly hard every day, but we get a lot of help from a lot of people in the community. So thank you.
Counselor Bowen, do this your hand up?
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on the questions of how we're planning for larger capital expenses in Parks and Rec. And so it may be a department question, it may be a finance department question, it may be a question for Mr. Perry as well. But just thinking about the next few years ahead, how we're making sure that we're staying up to date on maintenance. And I know a lot of the city is moving towards an asset management software and plan and really tracking, okay, this is, this playground equipment, it will reach its useful life at this date. And so we will need, either in our capital expenditure plan, or in the Enterprise Fund, or in the operating budget, some amount of money in that year to keep pace with the replacements we're expecting. So just curious if that's happening with the engineering department and the asset management work, if that's happening separately with the Parks and Rec Commission, and how that fits into our budgeting process?
We've been working very closely with engineering over the years. Eric Barber, when he was there, and now Lisa Chandler. But giving them information about all the assets that we do have out in the parks, whether they be benches, or tables, or playground equipment and so forth. So that's what the asset management will be tracking everything. It's funny, I worked 20 years in the software industry, so I'm used to triaging bugs, you know, and how, what's the severity, what's the urgency and so forth. And again, you always have to make choices on what you fix and what you can't fix. But from a capital standpoint, again, we've been very fortunate since 2014 to have the CPC funds. You know, that kind of opened the door for us, or let, or logjam, I guess, is what I always say. Because we were able to combine that with, or leverage that with park grants and state earmarks, which, you know, Representative Paracello was great at getting us, you know, lots and lots of earmarks. So we'll look forward to that continuing as well. But again, you know, when money is limited, we look at as many sources as we can. And whether they be private donations, Council Crowley mentioned, you know, the Cummings Center, they've made a significant donation to Balch Playground and so forth. And it'd be nice if we can get more partnerships with some businesses in Beverly as well. So we just look wherever we can get it. Like I said, if I had all the money, we would spend it. But if we don't have the money, we have to be, make some tough choices and set priorities.
Please, go ahead.
All right. And is there, other than the funding side, where there is a lot of different pools to draw on in any given year, is there similar to like our multi-year paving plan, a way to see what that set of next parks that are due for either equipment or a new court or something like that, so that potential funders and those grant processes are kind of lined up, ready to go?
Well, I have a spreadsheet that lists every park, all the amenities and ADA accessibility issues and so forth. And I'm happy to share that with people. I did go through and update it a couple of months ago with information. Unfortunately, I've been tied up with the nine projects that I'm working on to get, really dig into it. But we do, I've been a certified Playground Safety Inspector for about 18, 19 years. John Peddell got certified a couple of years ago. So we will be going out and looking at all of the playgrounds again and trying to, you know, create some priorities on what needs to be fixed right away, what can, you know, wait, maybe we replace a deck here or a slide there, like we did back in 2018. So it's, I have that information. It's just, it needs some updating. And that involves visiting all the parks and looking at everything again. But we'll try to find that time this summer when we're out and about anyway, so.
Good. Counselor Houseman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Bruce. Good to see you. And I just want to sort of share some of the kudos to you in the rec department in particular, for all the services you provide, especially down at Lynch Park. The program service, programming is fantastic in the summer in particular. Really do a terrific job down there. So I have two questions. One relates to Dane Street and the other to Lynch Park. So I'll start with Lynch Park first. Where, I know the Sustainability Department is not under your purview, but I'm sure you work with them and share information regarding sort of the master plan for Lynch Park. Just in a general way, how is that moving along? And I assume that, that, you know, that information is shared with the trustees for Lynch Park as well?
Yeah, we, we did do a master plan or preservation plan for the park a few years ago with a CPC grant. So we have a plan on how the building could be renovated and how we can get to where we want to be. Again, the problem is funding. For the rest of the park, we have been meeting with Tetra Tech and the other engineers to talk about improvements to the park to minimize the damage from the flooding. You know, we still are seeing some of the damage that was created last year with the three or four major floods in January and February last year. In fact, the walkway along the water by the ramp going to Lynch Beach was just repaired today. They poured the concrete today and have started the landscaping around that. So things are, again, things are looking great. But, you know, we need to do a lot of work to minimize the damage in the future. You know, we've had, since 2018, probably eight to 10 major floods that have caused significant damage to the seawalls and everything. So we do have a plan, you know, we met with Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech, excuse me, about two weeks ago, three weeks ago. We have another meeting coming up to look at the proposals for possibly raising the seawall a little bit, doing some hardscape along the water to prevent when the water comes over the seawall from washing into the garden and washing out the sidewalks and so forth. So there is a plan. It's not finalized yet. And again, there'll be a dollar amount attached to that. That'll be significant, I'm sure. So, but we are working with everybody we can to make sure we protect the park, the Carriage House, and anything we can down there. And then we've got issues at O'Beare, where we've been working on, you know, reducing the flooding over there and minimizing the damage over there, and some other locations as well. So we are working with anybody that we can to move in the right direction. You talked about the Carriage House. We were talking about the Enterprise Fund. I do want to say, kind of my big thing going back 10 years was getting enough money in the Enterprise Fund that we could actually do some significant work on the Carriage House. At one point, we had a $500,000 balance in that account. But other needs came up, and so that number has gone down. But if we ever do get the money, that would certainly be at the top of the list to work on down there. But we have to protect it from the water as well, because it's already seeing significant flooding every time the tide rises. There's a hole in the basement where the water comes up and the water washes out. It's just, it's all going to be worked on, so.
And my follow-up question relating to Dane Street. What is the, sort of the long-term plan for the bathhouse and the facilities there, having someone there to, even if it's periodically throughout the day, checking on the facility, drinking fountains, that sort of thing? What is the long-term plan? And is anything significant in that respect happening this year?
Well, the, you know, the bathroom was updated, again, I'll say 10 years ago or more, with new stalls in the bathrooms and so forth. But it could still use some tend-to-love and care. And there's actually a couple stalls that are being worked on now so that they're ready for the summer. Historically, we've only opened the bathhouse when the lifeguards are on duty, and they don't start until after school gets out and through Labor Day. So it's from 10 o'clock in the morning till 5:00 in the afternoon when the lifeguards are on duty. In order to expand that, we would need, again, budget increase versus, so, because you have to pay people to be there. I don't think we want to just leave the bathrooms open, starting in April through October, November, without somebody there to kind of keep an eye on them. So, because, you know, whatever. It's just, you know, wouldn't be a great idea. So again, I'm open to that. But again, it just would have to be worked out financially so that we could do that and have somebody over there to monitor the bathrooms, clean the bathrooms on a regular basis and so forth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Questions for Mr. Doig? Any others? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Doig.
Thank you very much.
Got off easy.
Thank you for all your help.
Appreciate your work. Thank you. Next up, we've got the Solicitor's Office, and Ms. Beth Oldmixon here tonight presents. Welcome.
Okay, so I'll say the opposite. Needs to bring this way down.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Anything about the budget you want to start with or share?
I have a brief statement.
Yeah, please.
But thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for having the Law Department in tonight to review our FY '26 budget. Unlike some other budgets that you've reviewed, particularly tonight, our budget consists of nine lines. However, within those lines, the department is responsible for all the legal affairs of the city. This includes advising all city departments, all boards and commissions, and the city council. On any given day, the lawyers in the office may be drafting ordinances, negotiating collective bargaining agreements, providing opinions on conflict of interest questions, appearing on behalf of the city in district, state, or land court, assisting the Board of Health with housing code enforcement, and reviewing contracts that the city executes. As you can see, this year, the outside counsel and the litigation budget lines have been reduced for the upcoming fiscal year. This past year, Mr. Dole spent many hours negotiating the city-side contracts and was able to settle all those contracts. And we're hopeful that this will provide the office with some flexibility and time and the outside counsel budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We can never predict what may come in terms of suits against the city, clearly hope none, or the need for the city to take action. Consequently, it's difficult to predict the expenses that the department may incur over the next 12 months. However, we are committed to providing legal advice to all the departments within the budget that has been set for the coming fiscal year. Happy to take any questions. And Mr. Dole, I'm sure, and Mr. Ailes will be able to help assist if need be.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Questions regarding the Solicitor's Budget. Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this may be a question best suited for Mr. Dole, if he is the lead on collective bargaining. How do we determine when to utilize outside counsel versus the internal staff in the Solicitor's Office for the various negotiations with our unions?
Yeah, I will defer, Mr. Dole, on that. Thank you.
Good evening, Counsel. The non-public safety city-side bargaining units, which are the two Department of Public Services units, librarians, school custodians, Beverly Municipal Employees Association, the, not this most recent round of negotiation, but the prior round of negotiation, I took over the bargaining with those units. We previously use an attorney from municipal law practice, Murphy Hesse, Tumi Lehane. I'd come up to speed in the first round of negotiations I was here for. So we've taken that over. We don't, we don't use outside counsel for any of those bargaining sessions. When it comes to the public safety units, fire, police patrol, police superiors, those are very, far more complicated CBAs than any of the non-public safety bargaining units. So in the same way that you could go to your primary care physician for checkups, if there's something specialized, you have to go to a specialist. So we use a partner from Murphy Hesse, Michael Macaro, who is on a daily basis statewide bargaining contracts for public safety units. He's familiar, personal relationships with the Department of Labor Relations, if we end there, end up there on unfair labor practice charge. He's familiar, has professional and personal relationships with the staff at the Joint Labor Management Committee, which is where we end up if we, if we're looking at possible arbitration with the public safety units. And he knows what the statewide trends are as far as the galaxy of different ways that police and fire are compensated beyond just base salary. And to have access to someone like that that knows what the trends are with, with how, the different forms of compensation, some new forms of compensation that are popping up in other municipalities, that's just something that in our office, with all of the things that we do, and I think some of you remember former Solicitor Williams, or A to Z description of all the things that we work on in a given year, a jack-of-all-trades cannot be a specialist, a specialist of all. So we rely on Michael to protect the financial interests of the city in those, in those bargaining sessions. And I can at least say, I take a, and I am aware of this in having a now seven-plus-year relationship with Attorney Macaro, I play more of an outside, outsized role, even though we do use Attorney Macaro. And we rely on him less than many other municipalities who do rely on him for his bargaining. Because I do all of the backend work as far as looking at comparable, comparable CBAs, JLMC decisions, DLR opinions, that relieves Mike and possibly even one of his associates from having to do that themselves and build a city for those things. So I work very closely with Mike Macaro. I know I work more closely with him than other, other solicitors and other, or town council. And even when we do use Attorney Macaro, I know that we, we spend less on his outside counsel services than pretty much any, any other municipality does. So to the extent we do use outside counsel for those sessions, it's just for those, those public safety units. It is, whatever we pay him is worth, is worth it. Because there is a potential, no matter how much I handle, that there's a short and long-term financial repercussions if, you know, that you don't have a specialist in those bargaining sessions. So that would be my.
So I appreciate that, Mr. Dole. And I do, I am glad to hear that you and/or any other member of the Solicitor's Office is taking a larger role in these negotiations. I do think that's important. And I know that you all do excellent work. On, just one more specific question for, in this instance, Attorney Macaro, it sounds like you referenced, but any other outside counsel that we utilize in public safety negotiations, are they the lead negotiators? Or are they supplemental in that they are in the room if necessary or on call? If, how, what's the dynamic between either your office or other staff and the outside counsel?
The only attorney we use for labor is Attorney Macaro. We use, as I said, we used to as a partner, another partner is firm for the non-public safety. We've now gone through two contracts. We've, we've found that that's unnecessary to rely on that attorney. I'm with Attorney Macaro side by side at every single bargaining session, every single JLMC mediation, every single DLR hearing. I, I'm in the room. I like to think it's a very collaborative relationship. And I would never allow him to go in without me being, being part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Dole.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all for me. Thank you.
President Flowers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Solicitor Oldmixon. I had a question. I had a question about the paralegal line item. I understand that Mr. Benson has taken a next step in his career.
Yes.
And so my question, which is good for him and perhaps sad for us, but my question was just about that line item. Is that something that you would expect the office to fill? And would you anticipate it being a similar budget range? Or should we anticipate some kind of a change there?
So as of now, we do anticipate filling that position. It isn't currently posted, but there is discussion about that. And currently, the anticipation is that it would remain generally within that line item as it currently sits.
May I ask a follow-up?
Please.
Thank you. I think my only other question, we just heard a little bit about the, the need sometimes for outside legal counsel who are specialists. Obviously, this is a different kind of role that the paralegal plays in the Solicitor's Office, but I was curious if you had thoughts about any other kind of budgetary implications, the lack of a paralegal between the time that the job is posted and someone is hired? Do you anticipate any other cost to fill gaps that you would see in the office?
I don't think so. I mean, he, Mr. Benson only left, it might have only been a week and a half ago, but it feels like a lot longer. And so there's definitely some, you know, quite a bit of administrative work that he did that Mr. Dole and I have been picking up and, and learning. And also, thankfully, there's been several other people within City Hall that have volunteered to help us with some of that work. So I don't think there'll be any budget effects for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Rundell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This may be a question to Mr. Ailes more so than to you. I know the, since the retirement of Ms. Williams, is there, has that job been posted? That's a, that's a department head job. I know it's not the will of the mayor, but, I mean, it's a position that has a high salary and obviously it will carry over, but has, has that job been posted? Is there any consideration? I know it really isn't the purview of us, but nevertheless.
Okay. Yes, it has been posted, and I believe there'll be a letter in your packet tomorrow from the mayor appointing myself.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, guys, it's almost 8 o'clock. Any other discussion? I wanted to note, we did get an email from the superintendent, so please take a look at that. Our schedule, we have a regular city council meeting on Monday, June 16th, and we're back Tuesday, June 17th, expecting the Planning Department, Fire and Police Chiefs as well, and then the public hearing next Wednesday, and then the special meeting for final vote on the following Monday. So that's the schedule. Any comments more generally that anyone wants to make at this point? Any questions for Mr. Ailes or Mr. Perry? No? Okay. With that, thank you all. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole.
So moves.
All in favor? Aye. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn the Committee on Finance and Property.
So moves.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.[1755.36]